I'm calling to order the regular board meeting of October 22nd, 2024, of the Los Virginas Unified School District Board of Education. For our first item of business, we will do the flag salute, a reminder that the meeting is being recorded into silence or cell phones. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Reporting out of closed session, in a vote of five to zero, with all members in favor, the board voted to reject claim number 2412619 and claim number 2412621. Approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Student board member?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have an agenda. Approval of minutes of October 8th, 2024.
Move to approve the October 8th board minutes. I'll second.
Thank you. Student board member?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
I'll abstain because I was not present.
Thank you. Staff board communication, Dr. Stapp.
Madam President, members of the board, one of our major focuses has been ensuring that our schools are welcoming and positive places to learn and to work. And to that end, we have had two fantastic partnerships, one with the Museum of Tolerance, the Simon Wiesenthal Center, their mobile Museum of Tolerance, visited Calabasas last week and is at Agora right now. Several board members attended last week and just this afternoon for a brief tour. Again, it's put on by the Simon Wiesenthal Center. It's a fantastic facility. The first two schools in the entire state of California to its two visit, award Calabasas and Agora. These are photos from the Calabasas visit. Essentially, our entire freshman classes from both high schools, Agora and Calabasas, are going through essentially the human geo classes, the social justice classes, so, which is fantastic. They focus on digital literacy. The program, the specific program they run, they can run a number of programs. The specific program they run is combat hate. And they provide critical thinking strategies relative to what's online, how social media operates, and how to combat and push back on hate speech and what hate speech is on social media. Bottom left-hand photo is a member from the City Council of Calabasas and State Senator Ben Allen. On the right-hand side is students from the social justice class at Calabasas and a number of dignitaries, including board members in there. I think Ms. Cutbill, Ms. Stein, Ms. Menges were there. And running through the program. Program run about 40 to 45 minutes. Fantastic partnership. It'll be at Agora tomorrow for its last day. We also invited all of our PFC and PFA presidents from all schools to visit it tomorrow as well. Next slide. Again, supporting positive culture in our classrooms for our students and our staff. Kaiser Permanente has a fantastic free program for us. They've actually have two. For elementary schools is Empathy Quest. It really is a gamification, if you will, of identifying what emotions are, what feelings are, and how to deal with them, and how to identify them in other students, and how to support other students as they go through it. Fantastic program for the middle schools. Both programs, Empathy Quest and Ghost, is for the middle schools. Ghost has been to all three middle schools. Empathy Quest is making its way through all of our elementary schools. And fantastic, fantastic program and great partnerships, put together by Ed Services, and I think Ms. Courtney Peoples was very involved in bringing these to us. Ms. Klein.
All right, Madam President, members of the board. As mentioned last time, this month is also Digital Literacy Month. And as you can see here, this was just today, actually. This afternoon, we did a digital literacy session with all the students in grades three through five through Willow. We are spending a fair amount of time talking about how to be safe online, how to be wise about social media, all the kinds of things that kids at this age need to learn. It's also important that we teach kids this at this age level because as they get older, then they'll have, make wiser choices and will have fewer issues with that. So that was a very powerful thing. You see Courtney Peoples is actually on the top. She's a little small there. And then Tina Johnson, also on the bottom, helped toast that thing. It was a really, really great day. Lots of great kids. We also, on Thursday and Friday, will be welcoming Frank Cole. We're back to our author visits series. He's actually coming in person. He's going to be visiting five of our elementary schools to talk about his latest book, The Legend of the Last Library. So we were looking forward to hearing what he has to say. He's very entertaining. Kids love watching him, and it keeps encouraging our kids to read. And finally, just a fun one. Just yesterday, we were over at Bay Laurel for the assembly, and in the morning, they had TNT dunking, that was called TNT dunking, out. And you can see from this picture just how fun it was. This guy was over the top of the rim most of the time, really, really high jumps. It was pretty spectacular. Kids had a lot of fun. And after that, we filmed our first episode of LVS Connects for 2024.
Do we have an insurance writer on that channel?
Yes, actually, they do have to provide insurance and all this, all kinds of stuff before they can actually come. So it was a fun event, but I thought that was cool.
That's causing me anxiety.
Just looking at it, I know.
Oh, my goodness.
All right. Ms. Chambers.
Madam President, members of the board, I wanted to share that our child nutrition team is hiring. We'll be hosting a walk-in interview next Wednesday, October 30th, from 9:00 to 10:00 here at the district office, for child nutrition technicians, operators, and a cook. Interested applicants should bring their resume and stop by the district office again next week on Wednesday, October 30th.
Ms. Davenport.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, the grade level lead teachers from each of our elementary schools met with me last week for the first of our four gatherings together for this year. So as you can see from the pictures, it was a crowded boardroom. Each table in our meeting represents one grade level. So the front table there is every, a second grade teacher from each one of our schools. And during this time, we really get to build community and connect with each other. I usually share updates. This past meeting was, we're updating on curriculum adoptions, our CASP interim assessment blocks, and professional development that's coming up. But the focus of the time was given to allow our teachers to share feedback, especially best practices from their schools, and engage with each other. It was a great time.
Dr. Schgon.
Hello, Madam President, members of the board. Our high schools last week, Agora, and then tomorrow, Calabasas, are very busy. And a huge shout out to Jim and his department to help get this accomplished. But all three grade levels, ninth, 10th, and 11th, participated in the PSAT exam, while our seniors participated in some senior activities. Agora had their traditional pancake breakfast, their senior photo, you can see there where they got in the shape of an A on the field. And then the counselors actually planned some workshops for them, some wellness workshops, planning for the future. So all grade levels had a very intense, comprehensive day. And then tomorrow will be Calabasas High School for the PSAT. So very exciting there. And then if we could go back one more real quick. On Saturday, Calabasas hosted DTAS, which is a drama theater competition. There was almost 1,200 students on the Calabasas campus on Saturday. And huge shout out to Bill Garrett for planning that and hosting it. And then they actually walked away with the award for the high school. So they were very, very excited for that. And then the next slide, continuing to pop into the secondary schools and walk-in classrooms, and this is from AE Wright, the Gate program there, that was a walkthrough history that some of the students were participating in, and parents were invited to it. It was great to see the parents watching their students pop up and answer questions related to history. And then to the left there on the screen, one of the other classes was working on some scale drawings of castles that they were designing and fortifying and putting different parts to it. And once they were done with building or designing their castles, they were exchanging their castles with another team to figure out how to plan an attack on those castles. So very exciting. And then the upper left corner there was one of our math classrooms utilizing some of the new curriculum where they were doing an assessment that day. So I walked in and saw them with their little cubbies on their computers, doing their, I believe that was a sixth grade class. Very cute. So thank you very much.
Dr. Gleason.
Madam President, members of the board, the Center for Educational Excellence is under the Business Department. And this year, we have our teacher induction program, serving our 30 new teachers in the classroom. This provides them with two years of coaching support. Val Lothian and Jesse Sweeney are leading the program this year, and they're using a model of instructional rounds. So we provide a coach, a mentor, and the teachers get a chance to go with their coach and mentor to classrooms and evaluate student learning in experienced classrooms to apply to their practice. So that started this week, and exciting to see that take off.
Dr. Schneiders.
Madam President, members of the board, I had the pleasure of being at a handful of our campuses last week. Want to highlight some of the work of our outstanding Los Virginas teachers going from left to right up there. So the picture in the upper left is Chaparral. It was students dressed like the staff and staff dressed like the students' day. So you've got, it's Mr. Ross up there. He's dressed in his Miami Heat jersey. And you see some of the students, they have their staff badges on. So very fun to see that at Chaparral. At Buttercup, that's Ms. Emily Pemberton, they're making pumpkin pancakes. They're absolutely delicious. So shout out to the chefs there. And then in the bottom left, that is Ms. Liz Ferguson over at YB. Did an amazing job. Ms. Davenport, you would have jumped out of your chair using thinking classrooms and math. Really unbelievable math lessons. Students were standing the whole time, moving around the room, had mobile whiteboards. It was really cool to see. And the picture on the bottom right, you already saw from Mr. Klein, something even more terrifying than seeing how high the slam dunker was, was actually being under the slam dunk with the students, watching them go about 15 feet in the air and getting dunked on. So lots of fun happening in our Los Virginas schools.
Ms. Falk.
Madam President, members of the board, last Friday, Bay Laurel did a disability awareness day for their entire school. They all came in as an assembly. And students got to experience what it is like to have a disability such as a hearing loss, a mobility issue. And by all account, it was well-attended, well-received, and really a lot of fun. And kudos to the staff who put that on.
That concludes staff communication.
Thank you very much. Student board member, Mr. Keld.
Madam President, members of the board, Agora and Calabasas have certainly made the most the past two weeks. Both campuses are in the midst of PSAT testing, and seniors have been celebrating with pancake breakfast instead. The Museum of Tolerance bus has visited Calabasas and is now educating students at Agora. At the Agora campus, as fall sports come to a close, we celebrate various senior nights. Volleyballs was last week. And this Friday is the senior night for football, dance team, spirit team, and sports medicine. It is also the last home game. This week, we held a special education luncheon to bring the students closer to other parts of the student body. It was a very nice lunch where students from the special education program were able to hang out with some of the student council students. We also look forward to the week of Halloween. We're holding a trunk retreat event for elementary students at the Agora campus. We are holding a blood drive to get to the spirit. And we will also have a spirit week complete with a Halloween costume fashion show. In the near future, we also have the ball play, puffs, courtesy of the drama department. Meanwhile, at Calabasas, they held a spikeball tournament. They had a senior spaghetti night, yoga at lunch, and held their student council freshman elections. This week, they're selling boo grams in honor of Halloween and have a blackout football game on Friday. Coming up, Calabasas is hosting a Diwali Henna Tattoos Activity, Halloween Dress Up Day, and Pumpkin Scavenger Hunt. We're excited to wrap up a busy couple of weeks, and we look forward to what lays ahead.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stein.
Thank you. Mrs. Menges and I had an opportunity to visit Willow last week. Was it last week? Yeah, today's Tuesday. Last weekend. It was so much fun to see what's going on in the classrooms. Is there more pictures or is that it? No, more pictures of Willow? Okay. We were thrilled to see that the class of many of the students were doing interim assessments. As a matter of fact, we ran into Mr. Dobson, Agora Assistant Principal, who was there borrowing tech, laptops, computers for the interim assessments at Agora. So very nice to see our schools collaborating and sharing. So that was really fun. We also went to Willow, I mean, to YB and to Chaparral. Do you have any of those pictures? No? That was it? Okay. So at Yerba Buena was Unity Day, and that was really fun to be there for Unity Day. And again, walking through classrooms and seeing all the good work. And Chaparral looks fabulous with their new field up in the upper level and their solar. Now, when does the solar get turned on by school or?
Extensive review process and Southern California Edison process, I think Lupin is maybe December.
Okay. Okay. Very exciting.
We're months away from Chaparral.
Okay. Okay. But it's very exciting to see the shade, and the students just love it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gaines.
I will pass tonight.
Thank you.
How's my volume now, though?
It's good. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I was able to visit Chaparral and Yerba Buena and Willow. And this picture is at Yerba Buena. And as Ms. Stein mentioned, it was Unity Day. And I'm standing with their counselor Denise Rosenbaum. And she has, what's on the ground there is their, they were, all the students were signing their Anti-Defamation League pledge at their recess. And it was really cute to see. And they were so excited to be supporting their pledge. And I also was part of the foundation's first annual meet and greet. They're trying to broaden their board and get more stu, more people, more parents involved from all of the different schools. And they also, the foundation held their annual poker tournament this past Friday night. And it was a lot of fun. And I haven't heard how they've done.
Thank you. Do you want to, before we?
Go ahead.
Okay. Ms. Falk very kindly arranged for a group with the CHS principal and Mr. Lawrence and I to go visit a couple of schools to see one who used cellphone lockers and one who used the yonder bags. So we just wanted to, we've shared our notes that we kind of put down what we thought about our visits with Dr. Stapp, but wanted to share those with the rest of the board. Our first school we went to was Dorsey High School, LA Unified. They use lockers, but they say they're transitioning to the yonder bags.
This is the second school, not the first school.
Yeah. 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 We're not, yeah. I'm just going to go over Dorsey really fast first. I don't have any pictures from them. They said it's generally successful, but they also have 17, 18 kids in a class. So even though you don't see them in the lockers, they're not generally out, but they're able to police their classes. But he said they are just waiting to find out how much money they're getting from LA Unified before they plan it. They're a low-performing school that's been targeted by LA Unified. So they're going to have a lot of resources for that, as well as what they get now for funds, counseling, and admin. So they anticipate creating a plan to get the bags for the fall. And then we went to, so this is King Drew Magnet High School. The principal there said 100% it's been a success. He said the first two weeks are critical, that it has to be all hands on deck. He did say, it is hell week, that, you know, the second week, he said, but then you're really changing culture. After that second week, he said everything changed. One of the lessons we learned was that you power on the phone and show that it's a working phone before it goes in the bag, so that it's not a burner phone from the kitchen drawer at home. For students who don't have a phone on them, their bag has a barcode that gets scanned, and parents get a note saying that their student reported they have no phone today. The teachers, he said, quote, "are in heaven." If they see a phone, they call the office. They are not the phone police. Some of his quotes, "social media bullying is gone, gone. It no longer exists during the school day." No downside at all when we asked him that. He said, "none." It is indeed a lot more work from an administrative point of view in the beginning. But that increased workload is more than offset by the elimination of the workload managing student discipline and bullying. He said the payoffs are worth it. He said, "you do need to have an all-out of, all-out on classroom personnel, an all-hands-on-deck the first couple of weeks." But the social aspect has dramatically improved. He did not know for sure, but anecdotally, he believed midsemester grades were up. Teachers can absolutely make the case for having one of the few portable unlocking devices for a lesson. They make that case directly to the principal. Smartwatches do go in the bag along with the phone. This lunch that we're showing here was just incredibly loud. But that's because all the kids were in the common area talking. We stopped some students at random. One said, "I actually felt I got smarter without my phone, as I was able to focus on school while at school." And when we asked if she uses her phone less at home, she said, "absolutely a big impact. I used to be on my phone for six hours a day at home. Now it's less than two."
I thought, I thought that was such
Yeah.
a profound, that we just randomly grabbed a student and asked her, and she basically acknowledged the fact that she was addicted to her phone and that the no-phone time at school had broken her home addiction. And she went from using her phone six hours a day at home down to two hours, just on her own, because she realized she no longer needed to be connected every living moment of the day. That, to me, was such a profound moment of the things we're trying to do here. We're trying to change better lives, not just while we have you for the school day, but for the whole, the whole child.
When we met with the CEO from yonder, the interesting we learned from him was, he was like a social science major. And so the thing about the bag is, you have it with you, but it breaks that synapse in the brain where the kid automatically reaches for the phone, grabs the phone between classes, grabs the phone at lunch. They start to lose that connectivity of that reaction of reaching for the phone, which I found very interesting. And they also do bags with, that are Velcro, because you create a culture where nobody has their phone out, but you don't want to stigmatize kids who might need them for medical reasons or special needs, so that they have their phones in a bag and everything's barcoded. So we were, there's a
No, I was just saying, I don't think you can overstate how profoundly joyous the noise was on the campus.
It was loud.
And you have, like, you just, you see the kids are all looking at each other, talking. Video, this was not like one shot. Everybody's talking to one another. Their heads aren't down. This is not going to solve all the world's problems
No.
by any way, shape, or form. But it is a huge step forward to, to
And we asked, you know, okay, so kids can still, you know, you can text somebody on your laptop. But he said, "yes, you know, you're not going to solve that unless you take away those devices." But he said, "what's happening is nobody's, you know, you pull, you're not pulling out your laptop to text someone, because now that person has to pull their laptop out. And unless you're in class," he said, "it, you know, is any system perfect? No." But we were tremendously impressed by the execution of it, the change of it. He said, "absolutely, there was no going back." So we, I just really appreciate Ms. Falk arranging that for us to go. They are high-performing. They're a magnet school. They're a science and medicine and science magnet.
I asked him, I said, "how hard was it for the kids?" And he said, "the kids are resilient. They're more resilient than the parents."
Yes.
And I thought it was a really good lesson for all of us. And he said, "we have some parents who are, change is even harder for them." And he said, "the kids took two weeks, and they're off to the races." So I just thought that was a really good reminder for us that we're here to serve the kids. And he, not that any of us needs a reminder, but it was just good to hear that he had no concerns from the kids being able to bounce forward on this.
Yeah. Yeah. So thank you very much. So as we keep learning and exploring different avenues, it was, it was good to go out and actually sort of, you know, hands on deck and see something. So anything else other than that? Okay. Then moving on to items, hearings for items. We have no speaker cards for, from the audience for items not on the agenda. I will move into consent A.
I'll move to approve consent A.
Second.
Thank you. Student board member?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consent B?
I move to approve consent B.
I'll second.
Thank you. Board only vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Information item, overview of Measure S, discussion of Series B rollout. Dr. Gleason.
Madam President, well, Mr. Dr. Gleason sets up. We first of all, want to start off by thanking the community for their support of Measure S. Measure S has provided $340 million to support, you know, essentially upgrading, fixing our 60-year-old campuses. And so we are so appreciative of that. $340 million will not be spent at once. It's essentially a 10-year plan that we have. We don't have the capacity to do that much work at one time. And of course, the disruption of the students would be massive. So right now, we are in the middle of Series A, of four series with Measure S. And the projects are going well. We've got about 60 projects launched, HVAC, roofing, TK expansion. As the board knows, the governor promised funding for TK classrooms, and they have delayed it, I think, three years in a row. So we are $9 million out of pocket on that. So Measure S was a lifeline relative to TK expansion, which has been greatly embraced by our parents and our community. So we are at a position where I believe that we can recommend moving essentially two years faster on the Series B, which would be about $85 million in those projects. So there's, there's the impact on the schools, impact on the students, impact on the staff, impact on our ability to manage these projects. And of course, we want to also watch arbitrage. We can't just issue the bonds and sit on or make interest from the funds. The state wants us really to be doing things with the money, which is the exact right position to be. Dr. Gleason.
Madam President, members of the board, as the board knows, when our first sale of our Series Z8 bonds was in August of 2023. And we anticipated, we always anticipate a three-year window. Three years is not a lot of time to spend, $85 million. But with the foresight of the passage of the bond, we already had projects in DSA clearance. One thing that came up is, just for the community perspective, is the solar net metering and cash and lieu benefits forced that project, which was going to be a Series C or D project, forced it into Series A. Good news for that is, we'll go off the grid. We're doing the responsible thing for the environment. But also, that'll, should net $2 million in savings and electrical bills off the general fund. That did push other projects to later series. Right now, the days are getting cooler, but there are campuses with some very aging HVAC systems coming to mind, or top of mind are Lupin, Sumac, and Round Meadow. Those three schools, we have already submitted plans through DSA. And so we're at a place where if the funding is there, we can initiate those projects once we procure, go out to bid and procure goods. So we're coming to the board tonight for direction. This is not an action item because formal action would be taken if the board chooses to proceed by, through the approval of the preliminary official statement and in early 2025. The reason we're bringing this to conversation tonight is because our, these schools have been through DSA, we can go out to bid in advance of the funding, so that when the bond funds in May of 2025, we can get work done this summer. We've been looking closely at our elementary schools, the three that, the three aforementioned elementary schools. And we believe we could potentially do some substantial work this summer. In addition to that, the Agora pool had failed during the, in the last earthquake. And as has been shared in prior agenda items, we're working to create a new complex there. There are tech projects and safety projects that are also on the horizon. So our recommendation, we did not anticipate being able to execute work at the level where we can have 85% expended or encumbered. Of course, today's dollar is worth more than tomorrow's dollar. And so if we can maximize the investment of the community, we'd want to do that. That said, of course, the board offers direction. We can continue with the August 2026 sale. We can do an August 2025 sale. But we do have the bonding capacity, our Bond Council believes the actual cash value of homes will allow us to sell in May of 2025. It will mean, because of refinancing and our initial, these two sales, it'll be our third credit rating presentation within two years.
Which is a lot. But as a member of Facilities Committee, we spend a lot of time on the bond and how it's going and all our various building projects. I'm very pleased and proud of the things we've achieved already. Very mindful of the fact that, you know, when we pass a bond for this amount, and it's meant to, you know, go out in three phases over a number of years. But this bond was really to fix and repair things. So to put it off is to not fix and repair things sooner. And, you know, our two biggest HVAC needs that were screaming at us in the district were the H Building at CHS and Sumac. You know, in Um, you know, in fact, we used the, um, HVAC pict- the picture of what, well, I can't call it an HVAC, that it looked like something from the, uh, pre-industrial revolution on top of the roof of Sumac, and no wonder that's not cooling things for our kids. So knowing that we could get out there sooner, and then that, that we have a pool that is leaking, uh, after that last earthquake considerably, so to, to step this up makes sense. If we were, um, doing shiny new things and trying to get to them sooner, I could maybe make the case for that, but I can definitely make the case for fixing things for kids and getting classrooms better.
I have just a question on...
Everything on that list is sixty years old, except the tech.
Yes, exactly.
The tech is not, but of course...
Exactly. Think about where you were when the, yeah, like the Sumac HVAC went in.
So just out of, um, just out of curiosity, I mean, you've all seen it, I, I, my, my kids have sat in it. Sumac is horrible. I mean, it, so let's set aside that it's hot. The portable units they put in there are so loud that you can't hea- I mean, it, it's, it doesn't make any sense to use the portable units, you have to keep the door open?
Yeah.
And put the tube outside the door, and the hundred-degree temperature comes in the classroom, so they're self-defeating, and they're so loud you can't even see in focus. So, uh, uh, they're all important, but I, 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 I think of the HVAC systems here, clearly the, the, the H building of this list is Sumac. Um, and I'm wondering, is there any way for us to fund the HVAC purchases with general fund monies now and then pay them back with the bond fund, so we don't have to put kids? Because on this schedule, they'll have another summer of no HVAC. We're gonna have another year of this.
No, uh, the, we would go out to bid now and procure now with existing S dollars, knowing that the series, because we're still spending AA down. Um, the, the goal, the goal, the, the only reason to consider May is we're doing work this summer. A couple of variables, the asterisk, um, is we need to be able to procure the units that are appropriate, we need to go out to bid, and provided that there is a company with that response to the bid, optimistic there is, no reason to believe there wouldn't be, and provided that we can procure and there's not a supply chain issue on any of these items, we are going to do work. Um, I would put Round Meadow right up there, too.
Yes.
With a very, as a very, uh, old unit, but we can, we can work both campuses at the same time.
So just to beg the questions I'm trying to get...
Sumac, we hope to start this.
Sumac, Round Meadow, let's put it together, that's fine. Like, that's still another...
We have to work over the summer.
Another summer of, if we're doing it next summer, that's another, uh, you know, May, June of high ninety-degree temperatures in these classrooms. Is there any way to do it? And, and it's fine if the answer's no. Is there any way to like, get them and do it over the Christmas holiday or over spring break or something like that?
Yeah, we don't have the funding, uh, we wouldn't have enough time to go out to bid.
And there's, there's ceiling issues, too.
We have, the, the Sumac, you have to drop the ceiling first. That's part of the reason, is all the hot air has a...
So there is, because I think this is the question, the cr- there is, there is no faster way under the rubric that California requires us to operate into for us to do than what you're proposing on Option One. It is, this...
Option One is as fast as we can.
And this is, getting, going after Series B right now is warp speed.
It is warp speed, absolutely.
And, and, you know, Mrs. Cutbill and I sit on the Facilities Committee, and one of the things that you have to do is you have to spend down certain amount of each bond series within a, uh, certain, uh, uh, number of years. So one of the thing was, does our team have the, uh, capability to do these additional projects right now, um, in Series B? And they have assured us that they can do that.
Because only Fa- because Phase Two of the H buildings is not, has not even happened yet, right? So...
So, you know, this summer...
I mean, this is incredibly faster than we ever anticipated.
It is, and it's, it, um, it's a testament to having the best team in the state. I mean, Julie, Sean, and Scott, the amount of, of play they can spend at the same time. And it'll be a busy summer, but, um, we know what those classrooms are like.
Yeah.
It's, it is not acceptable, and if we can do it faster, and that's the board's direction, we will.
Well, we're, we're looking for a direction from the board, so, I mean, my...
Dr. Gleason, is there any downside to going out so early with the next series?
Downside to going out?
The downside would be, uh, if, uh, the, the question to ask is, do we believe we can spend eighty-five percent of this in three years on top of eighty-five percent of Series A? Um, and the, uh, the board would want to exercise caution if we hadn't already had these projects cleared through DSA. If they're not, if we hadn't done all that work on the front end, the year and a half of work on the front end, to get these cleared and ready to fund, I would be hesitant to go out for eighty-five million. The reality is, we're not time limited, we're money limited. And that's a good place to be if you have the bonding cost.
Oh, very sorry. Another thing to note is, this has no impact on the taxpayers.
Yeah.
Rates do not change, taxes do not go up, taxes do not change. Um, in fact, hopefully, as Dr. Gleason said, we're saving money because we're moving faster and locking in lower prices.
That, that doesn't, so I, let me just, I will say my piece and then throw it out to each, um, board member. For me, I would say we have to do Option One. That makes the most sense for, um, financially and what's right for kids. So I will ask, uh, since this isn't a vote, it's an information item, but to get direction from the board, if I could ask each board member to weigh in. So Ms. Stein?
Thank you. I have a question. So you said we have DSA approved for three of the elementary HVACs?
Sumac, Lupin, and Round Meadow. Chaparral is plug and play, um, as I understand it. It was on the Series C or D list. Um, if there's no, if there's no shift, if you're just replacing like for like, you don't have to go to DSA.
Okay. Um, yes, no, I think it's very exciting that we can do this, and our goal was to, you know, cool these, cool these classrooms down for students, and so to be able to do this now, and unfortunately, like you said, or fortunately, to get the, um, cost savings from the federal government, we had to move solar up, because that is a significant cost savings to the general fund. Um, so yes, let's, let's do this. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Lawrence, I think you...
A hundred percent. And just for the record, my, my children will not benefit from this.
Yes.
They will have been through there six years.
But, but children will. Yes.
Mr. Lawrence, is your mic on?
Ms. Gaines?
Yes, I'm, I'm on board with doing this. It benefits everybody.
Yes, and...